It's 6:30, we're gonna open the public meeting. And it's a continuance for Day Mill's Townhouse Condominium Trust. And we heard conversation last week about, well, everybody had an opinion. And we're just gonna keep going on the subject. So, I don't know who would like to speak first. Lawyers here? Okay, I don't know if you'd wanna speak first?
No.
No, I'm gonna have the subject. No, you.
Okay. Again, it's Town House, where Tommy has a Day Mill condominium. Unless you have any, the board has any questions, I really don't have anything additional to offer. I know we heard a lot of comments last week, but my presentation was made. If there are comments made tonight that I feel like, I'd like to respond to, I'll let you know. Otherwise, I don't have any additional comments.
What do they mean, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Rich Huxham from Town Council's office. I don't really have any additional comments, just to reiterate kind of the high points of what I mentioned last time. The, in my opinion, the board is limited in its jurisdiction over this application to just the request to modify that particular part of the comprehensive permit only. In fact, the state comprehensive permit regulations state that about an application to modify. That's the only thing that's before the board is that application. And so, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
I have one. Last week after the meeting, I called a friend of mine, he's a real estate lawyer. He said that he has a condominium project that was similar to this one. And he gave the name of a bank that they should contact that would do the loan for them. Is it legal for me to do that? I'm not sure.
I guess you guys could consider that. I mean, the information that the applicant has submitted in the public hearing is that they have been unable to get financing because of this condition.
That's why I made the call, I wanted to make, I just feel if we change the elderly over, we're just gonna stack another problem on top of the problems they have. Because when I did talk to the real estate friend of mine, he told me that then the loans that they have are gonna be in trouble. It's just gonna create more problems, so.
Can our decision here be overturned by the Housing Appeals Committee?
If the board were to vote to deny...
I mean, either way.
Well, it's, it's a little bit of a unique appeal situation. If the board were to deny the application, the appeal would be to the Housing Appeals Committee, and they could overturn that, or they could uphold it. If it were granted, if you guys grant the modification, that can be appealed to the Superior Court. So, it's a little bit different from a lot of situations, it's different appeal routes.
It's kind of a unique situation. I've looked and looked and looked for a similar case, to no avail to find it. I mean, on the internet, you can look and look and look, and there's a lot of stuff out there, similar, but not the 80% that they're coming after. But like you said, we could allow it under the uneconomic means if they want it that way.
Yeah.
One way or another, if we say no to both, they just appeal it and get it anyway. That's pretty much the way it's played out so far in case law. Similar things, not the 80% deal, but the other one, it's a given, they'll let them have it.
Yeah, I mean, it appears to me, based on what's evidence in the hearing, that it would be, obviously, it's the board's decision, but it would be reasonable to make a finding that it was, that this condition makes the project uneconomic. I mean, you have to do it, I just, it would be reasonable. So, and how that would be addressed by the Housing Appeals Committee is, you know, we don't know. If you guys denied it, and, you know, how it would be dealt with on appeal, we don't know. I can say that a few years ago, there were a number of projects that were approved as 55-plus projects initially, and then they were changed. They got modifications to change to remove that condition. It became quite common, and my understanding was because of marketability issues. But that was a few years ago.
Any more questions?
You can open up questions to the audience if you'd like.
Anybody like to speak? The audience? Yes, ma'am. Stand and state your name, please.
My campus, Ms. G, 19, the One Real Circle. I guess I was under the understanding that we're not in compliance with the law at this point. Is that true?
No.
Well, technically, I guess if they appealed it, it could be changed because we didn't go with the 80% of the unit, 55 and older. That's clearly stated in the law. Now, whether or not, like our lawyer said at the last meeting, the appeals process is 30 days or something like that, if they didn't like the 55 units or 62 units instead of 80%. Now, I think he could probably better explain it than I could, that that's where the stickler is.
Would you like me to?
I would. Please.
In my opinion, it's correct that where a project is 55, comprehensive permit is 55-plus, that 80% of the occupied units are supposed to be subject to that. So, I agree with that. However, there is a principle that a condition that is objected to or is allegedly illegal is supposed to be appealed within the appeal area. And that's usually considered jurisdictional. If you go beyond the appeal area, you can't appeal. So, that's, you know, it's not a completely clear situation. But as I mentioned at the last meeting, I don't think that the board needs to really decide that issue in order to make a decision here. Because I think that another basis, a valid basis, would be to decide whether the board feels that this condition renders the project uneconomic or not. Based on the applicant that said they can't get financing to do what they, they say they need to do with this condition in place.
It's also my understanding that some people kept on to the banks, and because this situation was found, discovered, that they were denied. I know there was a gentleman here a couple weeks ago who said that he had refinanced without any issues. But sometimes, I think the refinance comes under maybe different standards than a full-fledged mortgage, because he already had the mortgage in place, and he was just refinancing. So, I think that, is it not true that because we're not in compliance with the law, or say, that people that want to sell, that they're buyers who need a mortgage, they could be denied on that aspect?
You know, that's a question that I don't know the answer to. The real, and it's not really what's at issue here.
I understand that.
It's what the board trustees has said about trying to get financing for improvements to the project overall.
Okay, but my concern is if we're not in compliance with the law, it's...
That's what the applicant has asserted. That's what they have, they are arguing that that is the case. The board is defined, or fact, yeah, the board is functioning like a court to determine whether they agree with that.
Could I address that point briefly? I think Attorney Huxham and I actually are more in agreement than anything. And I'm glad he raised that point about the permit, can't appeal it, the appeal period was gone. And in fact, when the special, or when this comprehensive permit was issued back in 2004, my clients effectively didn't even exist. There wouldn't have been an opportunity for them to appeal it because they wouldn't have been on the board, wouldn't have been part of the situation. So, it's not the situation where we're appealing the lawfulness of the permit, but what we're pointing out to you, and we're asking you if you would modify it, which your town council agrees you have the authority to do, for the reason that, the fact that it wasn't appealed, and the fact that it went forward, and the fact that at least part of the condominium was built, it created a problem for the board when the unit owners took over the board and the developers out of the picture. Because even though they can't appeal the comprehensive permit, it is also true that from my position as an attorney, that age restriction is not lawful. And so, what that means is it can't be enforced. It also means that my clients could get sued. If a person tried to purchase one of those age-restricted units and was denied the ability to purchase because he or she was under 55, they could sue. They could sue the unit owner, and potentially, they could also sue the board for keeping that restriction. And so, that's, so, the fact that the comprehensive permit wasn't appealed is definitely an important point, but what it does not mean, it does not suddenly mean that that restriction is lawfully enforced. What it did was it created, it created a problem. And so, that is, that's why we're here, asking for the modification. But I'm, of course, in complete agreement with Attorney Huxham that it's not, we're not, we're not here to appeal the special permit. We need help. We need help so we can get financing. And I appreciate the phone call you made to the person you know. The difficulty I have in terms of an open meeting is I have no, I have no ability to respond to that. I only know what my client's experience is, and that is that they can't get financing because of the age restriction. And so, and they need your help in order to resolve these very, very serious issues that they're having with the mold problem. And that's why we're here. But I just, I don't know if that was a helpful explanation to you, but we do agree on, I guess, on the technicalities of the situation, and I probably should have made that clear when I was here the first time. So, yes, ma'am.
What I can't understand, if this section is 55, why would somebody else wanna buy into that anyways? I mean, the thing is, these people want this 55, they don't want anybody else, so why would they, why would they buy, somebody buy into them? Anyway, is that what you're trying to say, that they can't buy? Why would they wanna buy into that?
Well, are you talking about the people who are there now, or someone new?
Somebody new.
Someone new, well, I'll give you an example, and this is from my real-life experience. There are watchdog organizations that look for situations like this, because there are attorneys who make it their business to find them. And they will file lawsuits, they will find a client to try to buy a unit, and they'll file a lawsuit if the unit, if the person is denied the ability to do that. They do it for disabilities, and they do it for all kinds of different situations. And the reason they do it, sir, is because if they win under the federal law, they get their attorney's fees paid. And that is a problem. So, that is, that is a real risk here. I had it to a, happened to a client once who owned a hotel, and it was discovered that some of the signs were out of compliant with the Federal Disabilities Act, and they filed a lawsuit, and that lawyer got paid. So, I'm throwing arrows at my own profession, but that is one thing that concerns me here. If that, and I don't wanna say too much about it in a public forum, but that is something that could really happen. So, you know, is there a high risk that someone who's under 55 will try to buy one of these age-restricted units? Probably not, but it could happen. And you know, my view about the age restriction is that it's unlawful. And even if that never happened, the real problem that we're having, of course, is not about the sale of the units, it's about getting financing. And it's the bank's view that it's an unlawful restriction, and that's the problem. Thank you.
Open it up to the audience. Yes, ma'am. State your name.
You know, I sit here and I listen to everything that's going on. I'm sorry, my name is Linda Galbraith, 31. Linda Galbraith, 31, Day Mill Drive. I mean, you can think of all different types of scenarios that you want in order to fit into what you wanna do. But the bottom line is here is that we never advertise Day Mill condominiums as a 55-plus community. We have just one community with sections for 55 and older. So, I mean, if there is somebody who's younger, there are many opportunities for them to buy into that complex and stay out of the 55 and older areas. I mean, these people bought there because of that stipulation, and to take that away from them, I think that that's wrong. And as far as not being able to get a mortgage, if we are getting this huge loan, none of us, I don't think, are gonna even be able to sell, 'cause nobody is gonna be able to get a mortgage to come into that community, 'cause we've got this big loan over our heads.
And that's the only reason why they're doing what they're doing. Get rid of the over 55 so they could borrow $2.1 million on a 12-year-old condominium complex.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jackie Jones, One Real Circle, and I did speak at the last meeting, so I wouldn't be able to lie to you, but my thoughts were kind of like rambling, so I wrote it down, so if you don't mind reading it, it helps me with my thoughts. So, I believe that the town's attorney did give you the right advice, media going to you, that you should make a decision based upon how it would impact the town's economic future. If the over 55 is not eliminated, I believe there would be detrimental effects to the town's economic future. The units at Day Mill desperately require this work. If it is not completed, then they will become disarrayed, and it will not only be unsafe for its health due to mold, but the overall structure will be compromised. By first-hand experience with the over 55 issue, we are required a mortgage because we're fairly new, we haven't been there a year. And we have excellent credit, had a substantial down payment, but two lenders saw the over 55 clause in the deed, and they denied us, they were very apologetic, but they said they could not open themselves up to a lawsuit because the over 55 was legal. Otherwise, obviously, we found the letter, but it did take some time, a lender, I'm sorry, time is something that we don't have as the community association, because these mold issues are just getting worse. If the issues that are within Day Mill were in anyone's standalone home, not a unit, you surely would be fixing this issue. The Day Mill Association Board was elected by members of the annual meeting, which I also attended. The board's duty is to act on the unit owner's best interest, and I believe that they have tried, and they are doing the best. The cost is high for this work, I totally understand everyone's concern, but the only options that we have is a one-time assessment fee, which would be a minimum of $5,000 per unit owner, or raise the fees to 25% of the current fee. They did tell us this back in February, I think, and said the fees would not be increased until October, which gives the unit owners plenty of time to decide whether they wanna put their unit on the market, if they can afford it, or figure out their budgets. And I think, and they probably would know better than I, with 25% is roughly $47 more on for this project. You might feel the answer to that. I understand that some owners believe that only the affected units should be repaired, but if I was to purchase a unit that stood beside the unit that had these issues, I would not purchase it. And I am one of the units that have this issue. And it's kind of old, and I have a big structure, cheese, I have a radish, boudin, we have a lot of issues. But I still bought it because I really do love living here, and I think it's a great community. But I can't speak that, you saying for everybody else, you know? So, even if you don't have it now, your neighbor might have it, and they know it would wanna buy it, and they assume that knowing that eventually, it will go down to every unit. It's not just to those 50, everybody eventually will have issues. I can imagine. And it is cost-effective to complete the project as one rather than piecemeal, while placing band gates, which have already been tried and have found not to be effective. And again, by and of eliminating over the 55, the values will decrease, which will in turn decrease the tax revenue to the town, and the units will never sell, so the owners could possibly abandon them, and then you would generate no tax revenue. So, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to make one comment. I heard that the board is trying to get rid of everybody over 55. Is that what I heard? Okay. Now, I'm a former board member, and I know the board members, I meet them on the committee for the reconstruction, and I have never, ever heard anybody say that they're trying to get rid of 55 people.
Wouldn't make any sense to them.
It just wouldn't make sense.
Half the owners are 55.
Between a rock and a hard place, and it's like the young ladies say, what are you gonna do? You're not gonna fix it? I mean, if you have a house, and something goes wrong, you gotta go get a mortgage, and that's part of the deal, and that's part of living. And I just think, honestly, it's time to revoke.
Anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Shirley Levine, Nine Millstone Land. I just wanna say, I bought my place with the idea that it was over 55, so I'm against changing it. I don't want kids on my street. And then recently, I was just to the point where I needed to do something financially. I called this reverse mortgage company just to get the information. You know what they told me? You will never get a loan through us or any bank because your people that manage your money have let your license expire with FHA. Now, that hurts us people that need, you know, and I can't afford to stay there, and I'm gonna be one of them that's gonna walk out of my place and desert it. And I'm 80 years old if they change this. I can sell my place better if it's 55 or over. I'm not selling it to a bunch of young people, and then they can't get a loan because there's no way they can get a mortgage. That's all I'm saying. I'm against changing it. I want it the way it was.
As far as not having any kids on your street, if you had somebody 55 or older with 10 kids, they could move in next door.
Well, it hasn't happened.
It's, I'm just saying, it's a possibility.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to know, why isn't there anybody here from Empire Management?
I have no idea, ma'am.
Ask your lawyer, ask, talk to your lawyer. This is ridiculous. The lawyer's for men. I'm Dreamer Latellier, and I live at Seven Millstone Circle. There should be a representative here from the Empire Mortgage Company.
Well, I guess, I guess the only answer to that is I'm in contact with them throughout this process almost on a daily basis. I'm here to be the spokesperson for the board, and you're obviously welcome to reach out to them tomorrow or any time you want, but they wouldn't be speaking because they're not...
But you know what? They never return your calls.
I'll let them know that you're having a problem with them.
Now, the people you're talking about trying to get a hold of, Empire Management, or the condominium?
Yeah, if you call them because you had a problem, say.
They're the maintenance part of it.
Exactly.
Maintenance contract.
That's who you notify.
Okay.
Well, it could take you four days to get a return phone call, and then they say, yeah, we'll be there in two weeks, while two months goes by and they're still not there. That, to me, is unacceptable. I pay condo fees, I expect service for it.
So, your board has a monthly meeting?
Thank you, sir.
The trustees? Do you get complaints from people about?
Not many.
No, it's not. Didn't hear it anyhow.
That's your avenue as a...
I just wanna say...
I went to one of those board meetings, and all I got was insulted.
Sometimes, they can be pretty coarse, because they may have heard it, and heard it, and heard it. They may be doing the best that they can, but if they don't have the money to do it, it's, you know, we're getting off topic, but that's...
I would just like to say one more thing that I meant to say earlier. The board has hired an attorney with our money to fight us, and I don't think that's right. They're using our money to fight us. To, you know, that attorney is not on our side, he's on the board's side, and Empire Management's, not ours.
Anybody else like to speak? No? Then I think we can close this meeting.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to close it.
Second?
Motion.
Okay. Okay, Cal, you wanna give the...
I'm gonna vote.
Well, I'll give a vote later.
We have a motion to vote.
Yes.
Second.
Motion to vote, second.
Second. All in favor of closing the meeting?
Aye.
Meeting is closed.
So, what are we...
So, what's...
So, what's the answer?
What's the answer?
He's coming up with it in a minute. Well, he's not gonna be here when we make that decision.
We, we talk about it a little bit. If we gotta get any more information to clarify where our decision would be, then we have 20 days to write it up and let you know what the person, the person in the claim called.
I'm just a little confused. I thought you were actually voting whether or not to change the stipulation to assist the people that live there. So, you're gonna do that somewhat in a private session situation?
Yes, yes.
In about 20 days?
20 days.
Cal, we'll tell you in a minute.
To answer you.
Cal, explain it to her.
20 days for today. I was a little confused.
I thought we were told that we would hear it tonight. We were told we'd hear it tonight.
The decision will... And then, if you have a decision, I understand, by the town clerk, and it's a 20-day appeal period. And that's...
All right, now, you have a question, Cal?
Whether it's an A, A and R, whether it's a site plan, whether it's a DBA hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Allow, 20 more.
Can we just take a very, very brief break?
Yeah.
Okay, just a couple minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. Could I confer with the chairman, please?
Certainly can.
Sure.
He's not here, but you can telepathically talk. He's not here, but you can telepathically talk.
Yeah, he'll be with me. I'm second in command.
I don't quite understand it. More than use of hard technical tools, I can't understand. We were told when we come back this week, we would find out. Still, no. I'm allowed to come, that's right. I came only because we were going to hear the answer.
All right. Something came in light, and we are going to have a vote tonight with everybody here. And we're going to make our decision right now. Dennis? No.
No.
Dave?
No.
No.
And I vote no. So, that's how the, that's how the board has voted, so. And like Cal had already said, 20 days, everything will be written out. Yes, sir.
What is no me, no what?
Just to clarify, there wasn't a motion before you.
Okay.
So, just to, just want to make sure we're clear as to what you were voting.
Yeah, can I have a second, a motion, then we vote?
I'll make a motion.
Do you need to state what you're voting for?
We're voting for. Over 55 and older is what we're voting on, for Day Mills.
You're voting to deny the request to change the 55 and older?
Yes.
I'll second that.
So, that means it stays 55 and older.
That is correct. Now, it is out of our hands.
Thank you.
And what their lawyer wants to do is, and Day Mills is up to them, if they want to take it further, that's off the board's hands. But we have voted no to keep the 55 and older as it is.
Thank you. Thank you.
I met you that you're in the meeting.
Now, they can use more of our money to fight this similar one.
Four.
Four names.
The way, the way you wrote it up, it twisted it, I think, didn't it? So, no votes means it stays the same.